Four thirty, we call the meeting to order. Angie, if you'll please call the roll.
Commissioner Bailey. Commissioner Bunting.
Here.
Commissioner Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Here.
Commissioner Owens.
Here. George to say that.
Heads please. Our most gracious heavenly father, we just thank you for the day that you've given to us and the blessings in it. And we just pray, Father, that you'd be with us. This evening that we would, as we consider the things that are most important to the books of Gracia County, fortunately, my prayer man.
Venice, San Blanche. Laid by the nations, to the body of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God. Indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Anybody have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Prove the agenda. Support.
By George, supported by Tim. Prove the agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wasn't a. Brief public comment, does anybody have?
I'm just gonna mop and uh. Put the name of the face, uh. Roy McCollum was promoted to under sheriff on Sunday with Steve Sapsy's spot. So you can put the name to a face, and I know some of you know him, but some of you do not, sitting in the middle in the back, so.
You said McCollum.
Callum.
McCollum, yeah. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Very happy for you.
Is there really more gray in your beard?
There's no more public comment, we'll. Consider the consent agenda.
What are the consent agenda?
Moved in support. Prove the consent agenda, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wasn't a, motion carried. Communications. Administrators report.
Well, holiday season has not slowed down around here in Gracia County. We have been very busy, particularly Sheila, there have been multiple. Openings throughout the county, this week we. Welcomed our new custodian to our midst.
Attested.
Look very forward, look forward to to working with him. We have four additional vacancies that are open, that we are accepting applications for. Um, we have an OCC case manager, which so far we've received six apps. Uh, actually, interviews have been scheduled for that. Our veteran service officer position, uh, we are working on hiring a part-time VSO. To plan for the succession of our current VSO.
Did you say ESO?
VSO, Veterans Service Officer. Uh, typically, we would not bring somebody in at a part-time to train them, uh, to replace somebody who was full-time. But we just turned over the director's position also, uh, so our current VSO is. The person with all of the. Training and training the department at this moment, so we're taking advantage of, uh. Some budgeted money in a state grant to help bring this position in and get them trained, uh, as. Before all of this knowledge refires. Uh, we have an animal shelter officer position that is open, our current shelter officer has. Moved to a different department, so we did not lose somebody, they just. In their. Well-being improved their current situation and their.
Where did they move to, what area?
Uh, they are. Going to be working for the drain commissioner.
Oh, okay.
This has been open for. Uh, since Friday, and we've received thirty applications so far over the weekend for this position.
Who was the one that that went there though?
The specific, first, the the the. Um, if you'd like to, you can meet with Sheila afterwards, and she can give you the specifics.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no problem.
I was just curious, because I know both.
Uh, we still are accepting applications for. Um, our dispatchers. Uh, we have received seven applications for that so far through Central Dispatch. Um, all recruiting's been very successful, resumes coming in are. Much higher than what they have been in the past, so it's it's good for the county, um.
Did you say thirty applications through the animal control?
The animal shelter officer, yes. Yeah, now, there is a difference between animal shelter officer and animal control officer. Um, George and Jan, they were through the whole conversion. Of the animal shelter when we worked with, uh, Gain, um, to to.
We have just an officer now that basically runs the shelter itself.
Yep, there will be. The goal will be to have the shelter officer also be an ACO, which is a control officer, but only for filling in and backing up. Uh, for vacations and like, uh, extended medical leaves or something like that, so. That is the plan with that. Uh, remind you that the Employee Engagement Committee is. Planned and put together the holiday luncheon, which will be on the thirteenth, which is next Wednesday. It will be from eleven to one o'clock, I did RSVP for all of the commissioners. Hoping to see you there, um, they have a full schedule of events for our employees. Uh. The Ithaca Light Parade was Friday, December first, um. Gracia County was represented in the parade, Sheila drove the side-by-side that was provided by the sheriff. Um, Sheila, I think you put the lights on that also, uh. Laura, uh, uh, the prosecutor and Fred Harris were also walked in the in the parade, um, and. We turned on the Christmas lights on the tower of the courthouse for the first time, uh, since the fire in seventy-eight. Uh, it was very well received from. The residents, um, I know I got a lot of emails, comments, phone calls, I know. George had a lot of conversations, um, but I was very proud of that moment, and I thought it went off very well. Um, Gracia County will be represented in the St. Louis Christmas Parade and the Elma Christmas Parade on the seventh and eighth respectively. Uh, Sheila is also going to, Sheila and Stephanie are going to be. With, uh, the Shop for the Hero event on Saturday, uh, December ninth. Uh. Central Dispatch negotiations are ongoing, our next meeting with CCLP, the union. Will be on the eleventh, and we were just notified this morning that. CCLP, who representing patrol officers and crackheads officers, will be taking us to arbitration. So, I do not know the details of that yet, I have not had a chance to personally speak with our representation. But, uh, I will keep you updated with the schedule for that when I learn more. Last week, we had a department head meeting, uh, just to update department heads on. How this new administration has. Put into play the the different goals that we had when we we first took over. Uh, we gave the department heads an opportunity essentially to grade Sheila and I. Uh, and give us feedback on how we have been running the county. And and I felt like that that meeting went very well. For the most part, I shouldn't say for the most part, we didn't receive any negative feedback, our heads were happy. We are gonna have our first airport advisory meeting on the seventh Thursday this week at three o'clock. Uh, Commissioner Sapsi, I know you talked to me earlier about the master plan.
We are having our master plan kickoff also on.
December seventh, Thursday at five thirty at the R E S D, this is for the local boards and, um. City managers to to get together and and discuss this, I emailed, uh, all of our employees a. Survey that was put together by Greater Gracia, who is organizing this master plan, um, to all of our employees so that they could. Provide feedback on what they would like to see their county, uh, look like in 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 the future.
That's open to anybody, right?
The meeting?
Yeah, whatever, yes, D, or not.
Representatives from each township, city.
Right. Uh, each individual municipality will be holding some of their own meetings, um, for that, so. If you were, uh, a a part of North Star Township. You would attend a North Star Township. Master Plan meeting, and then they would bring that to the group.
Excellent.
Uh, we are expecting a draft of our twenty twenty-two audit by mid-December. We have been actively working with our audit, um. Firm to get that wrapped up, and then we expect as soon as that is issued, they'll turn around and start our twenty twenty-three R, so. Uh, a little bit behind schedule, but it won't be hard to catch up.
Oh, that's fantastic that you're gonna get it done.
Yo and yo, yeah. Y E O, yo and yo.
Be good to get that wrapped up.
Yes.
Sure.
Be a lot of stress off of. My shoulders. And that is my very long administrators report.
Oh, thank you, Chris.
Uh, yeah, um, really, the way the holiday fell, I didn't have any township or village meetings. Uh, but I did want to add that about Friday night in the in the, uh, courthouse. Um. I'm old enough of a citizen of Ithaca, I remember that fire very well. Uh, the then building maintenance fellow, who was a very brilliant man. And an artist, uh, we were fortunate to have him, unfortunately, the knob and tube that was upstairs wasn't strong enough to hold all the lights, so. Kind of went up in smoke, but, uh. All good, things got, actually got repaired a lot better than they were at the time, and things all worked out, but, uh, no, the the. The citizens really liked it, they thought that was really nice to have some kind of representation of the county. Uh, they 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 feel sometimes that we're not at all involved with them, and when we do things like that, it kind of. Encourages them a little bit that we're doing something within the community. So, uh, that was, that was really good, um, so, that's all I got to report.
Tim, how about you?
Well, uh, with George, we went to, uh, the health board meeting. The doctor gave a cough and syphilis. Yes, it's, I don't know. Increasing. Does. Hookups by the internet or something there. Uh, I went to, uh. The Republican meeting last week, the bowling alley. They talked about the stresses of the Tony clerk about the. This young gal, uh. Who's our US House Representative? It starts with a N.
Molinar?
Molinar. She works for him. He's running again, of course. I guess he needs the only signatures, so. That's about it.
Tim?
Um, I had a meeting with MSU Extension. Um, that was last Wednesday, and, um. At Michigan State University. That was a whole morning, and, uh, LaDain from Conservation District went with me also. And, um, this is act culture, and one of the things they had us do was, they'd, uh, they have these things up on the wall. And they wanted our opinion on on certain things. They'd ask questions like, how would you do this, or what do you think of this, and how would you change this, and. So it was real interesting, and then when they were done, we could talk about, put it all together and talk about it, so it took a while. And I won't worry with all the small talk, and then I also had a meeting that Michigan Works on, that was on Wednesday, on Monday, last week I had. A meeting with Michigan Works, um, in Saginaw. And, um, did I tell you guys, I've told a few people, they were saying that. More than half of the, half of the homeless people now are children. And that's a real concern, and I sat next to two ladies, and the one lady is, uh, working out of Saginaw. Uh, with, um, teenagers that are dropping out of school that. I'm assuming they they're dropping out of school, and and these are homeless kids. And and trying to find places for them, I'm not sure all the details, but I did give her the phone number of the hoop house here. And, um. Somebody else I gave her their home, oh, child advocacy, I gave her those two numbers and. Uh, that's, and that's kind of what they wanted, they want to work together with the counties and stuff. So, but it was a real interesting meeting, and also, Michigan Works is gonna change. We're gonna have, we're working, looking at it, maybe having a couple of meetings in Saginaw, a couple in Mal Pleasant. And then there'll be some meetings, because I'm on the executive board, I'm there and, uh, Midland. And I thought about here, but I don't know of any place, we'd have to have a place that would hold around fifty people. That's about me, that's, a lot of people come to, uh, that's from the different counties.
R E S D building a whole fifty people.
I never saw about that.
Just get with all.
Okay, I will do that. Yeah, because it'd be kind of nice if they came here once, uh, once a year. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. Yeah, that's all I have.
Steve, do you?
Yep, um, yesterday, uh, Dave and I traveled up to the Northern Michigan Counties Association, uh, they had. I guess they called it a meeting, even though we didn't officially have any, uh, business meeting, um, we stood outside in the freezing cold, it was a. A temperature shock when we got up there, the roads were icy and snowy, and the backwaters of the dam, we we traveled to Oscoda. For opportunity to travel or to tour the Cook Hydroelectric Dam, and it was very interesting. Uh, there were several representatives from the, um, Consumers Energy there, there was, uh, two-state House of Representatives there from. Different, uh, northern counties, um. Uh, consumers is faced with, um. You know, what option are they gonna go with? Hydroelectric is obviously renewable energy, and it's green energy, but it's very inefficient energy. In comparison to other forms of energy, so how much money? I mean, right now, they basically figure their their series of dams they have across the state of Michigan are kind of at a break-even, what it costs them to keep. And the biggest part is labor, means very labor-intensive to have people keeping an eye on all of the things that they have to. Per state and federal regulation, um, so it's basically what they spend. Is what they get back out of, uh, generation of electricity, um, their. Lease or license, which is good for an extended period of time, forty years, when they get licensing, it's good for forty years. That is coming up in the future, they have to decide kind of what they're gonna do, if they're gonna stick with it, um, and continue ownership of it. Um, but it's a complex issue, because a lot of the, um, the backwaters of these dams are now part of federal forest land. They're part of, um, some of it's privately owned, the vast majority is either owned by the federal government, part of these. Or owned by Consumers Energy, and we're talking like twelve thousand acres, according to all their, along all of their different, uh, behind the backwaters, all their dams. Um. The interesting things about Cook, um, David, I got to get our picture in front of one of the old, uh, generators there, um. The, they started generation in December of nineteen eleven. They're still using the same exact generators. These are a horizontal style, not a vertical style, um, so it's, they explained it, actually, the the new. Or what would be used in a vertical-style hydroelectric dam. The bearings that they use weren't even invented, the thrust bearings weren't even a thing, and. When this plant was built, so that's why it's a horizontal style, and, um. If they were to spend at that particular building, it would cost them seven million dollars. To update the power generation, the three turbines they have there. To the newest style, it costs seven million, and it would only generate a half a megawatt more. In that plan, um, which would virtually, you know, it'd take forever to pay for itself, um. I mean, these things are old, I mean, when you look at them, you're like, you can picture that that casting was done in nineteen eleven. I mean, there's huge cast iron wheels that are spinning, it it was very interesting, um. They were very thorough in their explanation and why they do things, and, um, it wa- it was very interesting to see that. One of the most interesting things I found was talking to one of the employees there, kind of a side conversation, was if something were to happen to our grid. Hydro. Electricity or a generation can be manipulated manually. I mean, they have these big wrenches that hang on the wall, and there's a way that they can manually manipulate these gates for the water to flow in. So that they can generate electricity, and they would be able to actually energize. The grid, if the grid ever went completely black and there was no power on it, hydroelectricity, due to its nature of being able to be. Open manually and get those turbines spinning, which automatically starts generating power, they could backfeed into the grid and actually. And re-energize the grid, um, so you, when you think about that, not all forms of. Energy generation can do that, in a coal-fired plant, you gotta have power to run. Things in order to get the steam made to make the power. Um, even with our windmills and, um, I'm not, they didn't talk about solar, but even with the windmills, you gotta be able to get those. Transfer the power to one of the substations to get it generated up, it it doesn't just happen, where this. Can be manipulated to generate power, it was very interesting, and, um, that was, um, very eye-opening to me, like. Maybe we better hang on to these things, because, you know, the likelihood of something like that happening, I think increases as we rely more and more on electricity and, uh. I mean, this whole building, this building was utilized to generate electricity and to get it out to the, um. To to a usable form, and now that's all condensed down to these, basically, these computer panels, I mean, you could literally have this building, could be. One tenth of the size it is today. From where all the manpower used to work and all the manipulation things they had to do, another interesting fact about that one is it held the record for the longest. Transmission of a megawatt of power. Hundred and seventy-eight miles or something that they sent power to the city of Flint, so it was a, it held a a world record. For the longest transmission of power back in the, I think it was in the twenties when they got it that to push it that far, so it was really interesting to hear the history of that. And to hear the series of how they, I think there's six along the Osob, six or seven right along the Osoboe River. And how they all work in each other, and when we were outside talking, the Midland County was there, and obviously. They talked about their catastrophic, um, events that occurred when the, when the dams failed, um. And how. Important it is for a consumer, I mean, they they fluctuate, what was it, four inches of water? When you think about the amount of water coming down the Osoboe River, and they, there's this old-school scale on the walls, literally a rope. With a green line, yellow, and a red line, and that is what they use to. Determine the flow of water coming out of that backwater, it it's to keep that on within four inches of each other. At at all times, and that's what they determine if they're gonna let some water pass out of the floodgates. It's, it's really, really interesting to, uh, and some of it is just very crude technology, but it works, and, um, it was, it was. Very interesting, I'm glad we went up there.
Well, absolutely.
And as far as my township and and cities, next week is my busy week, it gets started, Angie provided me yesterday, I have a. A list of, um, all of my. Meetings and when I need to be there, and all the supervisors, and so some of them I've already talked with. Um, but I'm gonna be making contact with all of them to confirm that there hasn't been any changes in the dates and times of their meetings, because it's. Any of you who've ever been involved with any township or villages, um, those meetings don't always stay. As printed, um, so I'll be busy next week, going to my first round of a bunch of township meetings, so. Looking forward to it.
Second week of the month, there's a lot of township meetings. Well, I went to the Seville Township Meeting, and. It was a mess. Pretty much decided that there isn't gonna be a fire hall there. They can't afford. Went to Pine River and. They said, because I was their representative, that they thought they should get more money from the county, said we're broke, get out of here. I went to Elma, uh, and they were talking about, uh, one of the big things was the new trees, it was right up in the paper. Kind of interesting too, you never think about it, trees are trees, but some of them have roots at the top that raise heck with the sidewalk. And they're getting big enough that they block the signage on the buildings, now owners of the buildings don't like that, so. This is kind of interesting. Well, it wraps up the committee reports, now we go to consideration of new business. Reed Park Paving Project Phase Two.
Hey folks, Pete Little, Parks and Rec Director, thanks for having me, so, uh, the project we're talking about, I do believe you have in your packets, there's a detail. On that with, uh, engineering plans, and then also the 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 bid, uh, quote on that. Just want to give you a little bit of background information on that, this is obviously the second being Phase Two, we did Phase One about two years ago. We paved the parking lot and improved the drainage, uh, and we intended to do the whole project then, but it was, we were, uh. Constricted due to finances, it was more than we had expected, so we broke it up into two parts, so this is the second part of that project. And so what it is, is this to pave the North Drive at Reed Park. We have a drive that goes along the north out to the east end, and the east end is where we have our boat launch, a few other pavilions, a a second beach area. And a bathroom area, um, so this this paved road will also serve as, uh, universal access parking to. Access those three pavilions on that east end of the park, which currently don't have any, um, handicap accessible parking to them. So that's our our big goal here is to create, um, uh, all of our amenities within the Reed County Park, uh, to be accessible for all users. Um. This was, uh, identified in our recreation plan, we have a five-year rec plan, uh, that we are currently under our twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Recreation plan, and this is a plan that was identified in that, uh, the citizens of Gracia County said this is what they want for their parks. This scored high, and they wanted to see these parks paved, um, the other reason for it is not just to have. Uh, pavement and accessibility, but it's also to cut down on the dust, uh, these three pavilions are very close to this, what is currently a gravel road. And if somebody drives by more than, you know, five, ten miles an hour, it kicks up a large cloud of dust, which will can easily, uh. Overtake your pavilion and your your picnic area, so we want to eliminate that issue, um. In addition to be supported in the recreation plan, the Parks and Recreation Commission approved this at their last meeting. Um, and the department staff agree that they think this would be a great, uh, benefit in addition to the county parks. Um, probably about five years ago, we paved everything out at Hubshire Park, so it's just an an attempt to complete, complete the parks. Bring them up to code in terms of universal access, and, uh, make them function better, so. That's the background and the support, um, if folks have questions for me. Um, be happy to answer, you can see we do have the one bid, uh, we would have liked to get more votes on that, but this was. We put it out for advertisement for, you know, the thirty days, and, uh, this was, we only had Isabella Corporation. Submit, uh, a quote for it, which is disappointing but not uncommon for this. It's a hundred and ninety-eight thousand to do the project, when we were going to do it two years ago, the quote was a hundred and forty-five thousand. But that included mobilization, which is typically around twenty thousand dollars, so the fact that it's about twenty thousand dollars more. Two years later, doesn't surprise me, so I feel like it's a good number, so I feel confident in that number. We do have the funds, we've been saving our money up the last two years to pay for this project, so we we have the the money to pay for it. So.
Pete, I have to be honest with you, I cannot vote for this.
Pete, I have to be honest with you. I cannot vote for this. One, a lot of reasons, it will, all the townships that I have. And the cities and even the ones that I had previous, um, wanted money to be able to do stuff. In their locally town. And the problem is, is that I have, you have a whole site over here that can't get out there. And so, but there's. Well, I mean, there's, I mean, I'm talking about kids. A, a lot of these towns would like to put water, water, um, what do you call that, water park? Into their communities because they have kids there that their parents work and they have nothing to do all day. Or they'd like to put in a park with some playground things for these kids to play on and that costs money. And they feel that that should come under parks.
We have put money aside for that. We have a hundred thousand dollars aside for that this year. Uh, the application deadline is the fifteenth of December. We've only had one municipality apply to us so far.
But which one was that?
Our summer township.
Okay, cuz I'm going, I'll go to the meetings um, this month and, and check with Alma and St. Louis. And I know that Breckenridge was, uh, Wheeler Township was another one that would like, I mean, the furthest away is Wheeler Township. And they're giving a lot of money for something that they can't really use.
You can use it.
Well, they can use it.
Parks accessible at all.
Use it, but the problem is, is getting out there and getting back and uh. So anyway, I, until they can get what they need.
Well, the money's there for them. They can apply.
I have, I have let all of the municipalities know this. Two weeks ago, I think it was the last time that I put an email out. And then two, so.
Yeah, good. Reminded them of this deadline, so everybody knows when they.
And I, I hope to get some more applications in the next couple of weeks, but right now we only have one and it totals eight thousand dollars.
And this is Christmas time too. I think everybody's really busy with a lot of stuff going on.
Pete, I have some questions. I guess, um. Was all this drafting and done, that was done by Row, were these done? In twenty twenty-two? Cause the plan date says September of twenty twenty-three and I'm just curious if. This was all done as phase two of the original plan? Or if we went ahead with planning something and spending money on getting something done that we hadn't. Got approved from here to spend the money on, I guess is one of the questions I have. Um, from my understanding, we, we have to approve it before we move forward on it and that's my concern is.
We followed all the proper procedures for approvals, yes.
Okay, so the Board of Commissioners approved for us to spend money on this project?
So I'm here for tonight, for this portion of phase one was approved, yes.
Okay, but I'm talking about Row didn't do this for nothing. They didn't draw this stuff up for nothing.
So most of the.
Did, I hope we. Rest of the county, so we get all the rest of our bids.
Majority of the plans were drawn up during the phase one and we, yes, we did have to pay them additional funds to update the, the plans and put the bids out. Yes.
It's actually fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars more than it would have been if we would have just went ahead with it back then. So it, it's a, it's considerable cost to the county for, I guess if they, you know, we're approving it in December of.
Part of the reason we didn't do it then is that we, we have to take these, this money out to put it into that millage. Funding campaign. So we would have had the money then, but with the, the way the millage is worded now into. To Jan's point, we are setting money aside for that millage funding program. So that, that's why we weren't able to fund it then.
We didn't have the money from the millage.
We have the money, but we had to ta, we have to take it now and, and put a hundred thousand dollars aside for these other projects, so.
When, I guess when this was originally presented to the board back in twenty-one or twenty-two, I know that work was done in twenty-two. Was it clear to them then that this was gonna be a two-phase process?
Yeah, it was titled phase one and, and phase two was an alternate bid.
When I look back at the old, um. Uh, board minutes from there, there was nothing about a phase two then. That's nothing that I.
It was in there.
I, I didn't see it when I was looking through it um, yesterday. Um, so that was, I was uh. Concerned that we didn't, I, I couldn't find where there, there was a, a phase two to begin with. And I, I guess have we ever done any studies? How many people actually go there to boat? And boats? Well, this takes you to the boat launch, right?
No, it's, it's, it, yes, the boat launch is there, but it's the pavilions that I'm mostly concerned about.
Okay, and currently it's just gravel, correct?
Gravel and grass.
Okay, have we looked at any other, like, do we brine that, like they do the county roads and it's still, there's that much dust?
Dust isn't as big a concern as like accessibility.
Okay.
For the pavilions.
So those three pavilions are down there. Okay, because how many of the pavilions are already accessible? So there's three that are, the three big ones are, most modern ones are all accessible handicap-wise, correct?
And then six is, it's given, there is a paved sidewalk ticket to Pavilion Six, but it's quite a ways.
Okay.
So feasibly, I guess it could be considered accessible, but it's a good ways. It's unrealistic to expect somebody to wheel their way all the way up to that pavilion. So now they come across the grassy fields from the north.
How often are those other pavilions used? I've, I've been there.
Used every weekend.
Reserved it for every weekend then?
Every weekend.
Is it county residents only that book them or?
I have that information, yeah. Out of county do pay if they are using them.
I know there was some, some nominal fee cuz a lot of people who are there, I've been there, a lot of people who are there are not. Grashad County residents.
Right, so for a small pavilion, I believe it's twenty-five dollars a day and the large ones are a hundred for non-residents.
I, I'm just personally gonna say it seems like an awful lot of money.
I know.
To go to, um.
It's gonna be more if we wait.
I, I fully respect that, but I'm, I'm just, I guess it's a lot of money that. I, I see Jan's point where, you know, there's a, every little town, every township. A lot of them have parks that. They're not handicap accessible and this is where people live every day. I mean, it's a, it's a jaunt, if you will. I mean, you, nobody walks from North Star out to Reed's Park. It's a jaunt to get there. You gotta drive down gravel road to get there and so I mean, it's, um. I guess that's my biggest concern is the amount of money and I respect that it'll cost more, right, as we wait.
Like, like it already has, right? We have, if you had done it originally, we would have saved the fifty-three thousand, you know, whatever your number was, yeah.
But it's, um.
But I always think of these being for families and children. And in the summertime, you have all these children. Now in St. Louis, they have the pool, but that's not always open when these kids are able to go. And I mean, they would love to have probably a water park there.
But again, we can do both. I mean, that's, I think was my point in saying we have funds set aside. For the, for the municipalities in the, in the villages and we have funds available.
That's just, you're saying, like for instance, say it's a, say it's fifty thousand. You might give them ten or fifteen thousand, they've gotta come up with the rest, when really it's.
No, they don't, there's no match. They can. We've, we've, we've funded a hundred percent of projects.
You have?
Yeah.
Okay, cuz I know over in Alma, they wanna do a, a bike trail. Everybody's riding bikes these days. And so they wanna do a bike trail through this park. And the last I knew, I was just at a meeting, I'll bring that up at the next meeting. Did they ever get that done? But the last I knew, they hadn't. It's just hard to.
It's a lot of work to do the project itself too, just to put together the application and do all the, the work.
Put the money there when you need new drains and you need, you know, you need all these other things that are new sidewalks, new drains and all that. It's hard to put in something for just leisure or fun. And so that's where my concern is starting to be is that um, over especially on this part of the county. There isn't a lot of things to do. You can go to the park. There's lots of little things for little, little kids to do, but nothing for that middle age.
Right, right. Have we looked at some other alternative funding sources? I mean, obviously we have the, the, the millage comes in every year. Have we looked at other, I mean, one of the big things is this handicap accessibility or accessibility issue. Have we looked at other funding sources? Have we applied for other grants to maybe help?
We have. In the past, we have a lot of our, our paved sidewalks were done through com- community foundation grants.
Yeah, that's, I was wondering, I mean, this is a big load. On the taxpayers' dime, to be honest, that I think it can go other places. I, I know people want it done.
Um, that's the tricky part is that it, this isn't me asking for this. It's the Grashad County residents, put it in their plan. They, they approved it, they put it in their plan, so I'm just here telling you what they want to do with their money. And we've been saving that money to do the project that they asked for. I don't know what to tell you.
How come the Chair of the Board didn't come this evening?
It's, it's my job to present this. They, we discussed it at the Parks and Recreation Commission.
And in the past, he's always been to ask.
Yeah, no, I sent out an email to everybody. Yeah, the whole board and they're definitely interested, but I think they felt confident I could. Uh, you know, spread the word and answer questions for it.
Oh, what do you think, George?
Well, you know, Pete, I always appreciate, you guys run the parks really well. You do a great job. And so that's not even part of my thing.
No, I understand.
All right, but this service road that I've been looking at that goes up to these two or three.
Yeah.
Pavilions.
Right.
Um, and, and I, I, I agree. It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
And when you put these down, guess what happens at ten, fifteen years? You gotta repair them. You gotta keep doing this.
Yep.
To me, I would say that's in the back. It will, can be accessible if you improve that road. I don't think it'd cost you a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to, to do an improved road system back there with limestone.
So we, that's what we originally did at Hubshire Park. We spent eighty thousand dollars to do crushed limestone at Hubshire Park and then we ended up paving it.
Well, that's because the people of Grashad County have been very generous. And they, they want nice parks. I agree with that.
Well, the dust was just outrageous.
But, but the, this, this is to the back and a crushed limestone and. You know, and I understand it bothers people within the park. And I think that if you put an alternative road system in there at a lot less cost. And you can keep that dust down. You, you brine, you're just brining sand that goes away. That's not.
We brined at five hundred dollars a pop.
Well, I know, but it, what you just said, you had gravel and sand.
Yep.
There's no road base there.
Right.
And if there's a road base there. And you're gonna have to put a road base there anyway, you're not gonna put asphalt over sand, sand, gravel. And so I'm just, I'm just looking at a way to extend out. Because there, there's hard times right now. People are, people are spending a lot of money for groceries, they're spending a lot of money on their kids, they're spending a lot of money, everything else. You know, and I'm just afraid one of these days, they're gonna look at the parks and go, you know, I got groceries to buy. And I'm worried about that.
Yeah.
And I think, like some have said here, I think that. The park money is put in by every taxpayer property in Grashad County. Everyone. Not just a few, everyone. And I think that maybe by looking at different things, saving a little money. And then taking some of that money that, that are left over in your millage, you say, well, you know. I can't, I don't wanna say a particular township, a township. And they've been struggling trying to keep the grass grow, or grass mowed at their little park or whatever. And I'm not saying the park has to go out there and mow it, but I'm saying you give the township. A couple of thousand dollars a year here. You take that and you mow your park.
And keep it up, sure.
That's kinda thing. You don't, we don't have to be directly involved in it.
Sending staff down.
So, but I think, I think there's a better way to do this. I really do.
That, that's my feeling, Pete. That's a lot of money. Uh, and just cuz we have the money, doesn't mean we have to spend it. And.
Well, I mean, that is what the money's for and that's what the residents asked for.
They did ask for it.
Yeah.
That's before the interest rates went up and the property tax went up in the last year here and.
We, but we collect this money to, to spend on Grashad County parks.
But I'm saying the next election, I was gonna check with the clerk to see when is the next election for parks.
I think they go to twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, they just, they just did it. They can slow these up.
Well, does anyone wanna make a motion on the paving project?
I'll make a motion. To, to do it? No, no, to vote. No, just to take a roll call vote.
Well, we have to have a motion to do what, Tim? Do you wanna just not fund the project? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That, that's the motion then?
Yes.
Motion to not fund the project?
Second that though.
Action by Tim, second by Jan, to not support the project.
So you have to vote yes or no, right?
Right, you're voting.
Yeah, we're voting, voting yes to vote no, one of them things.
Okay. This is money, so probably should have a record roll call.
Yep.
Commissioner Bailey.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just kinda screwed up. Vote no, yes. Yeah, I, I said it and I did it myself.
The Chair of what?
Commissioner Bunty.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes.
Commissioner Sapsi.
Yes.
Commissioner Owens.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yep.
Next up, class action lawsuit against some. Boxone.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I am here to talk about the class action lawsuit that Grashad County can potentially. Enter into. So we did speak about this in closed session at the last meeting, but now. We need to move forward and you guys need to decide what it is that you would like to do. So just as a recap. As an administrator for our health insurance, for our staff. There is the potential that we paid for Suboxone for one of our staff members, one of our dependents or one of their family members. This class action lawsuit is saying that we were overcharged, that people that purchased this medication were overcharged. And so we can enter into this class action. So there's three things that can happen. Essentially, we can stay and do nothing, which would keep us being an end. An end payer class, but there would be no chance of getting any of the funds. You can have the administration office file a claim for this. Um, or you can um, go, we can move forward and have Maxor, who is our administrator of. Medication and prescriptions. They can file for us. They will charge five percent to any. Award that we would get. So you, um.
So what do you recommend?
My recommendation is that we move forward and have Maxor do it, just because we do not maintain any health medical. Um, records in the county and I think it's best for our staff to continue to keep it that way. Um, five percent does not feel like it is an absorbent cost for this, um. And so.
We don't have it anyway, I mean.
We, correct, correct. Um, and so Maxor will. Submit a claim for us on the day that this, the cutoff date and then if we get anything, it will just be money that will come back. To the county.
That's the only way we have to pay, correct, is if, if there is an actual.
There is an award.
An award because they, they determined that we did have the overpayment.
And we don't know.
Yes.
At this point, if we do or if we don't. So we would be, we would not be out anything if we did not have a valid claim.
And as follows the same path as opioid lawsuit.
Exactly.
That meant it.
With that, I saw move that we move forward with this Suboxone class action lawsuit uh, with Maxor. Uh, entering into an agreement with them to um, represent Grashad County. Or.
A move by Steve and supported by Tim to have Maxor facilitate the Grashad County claims. At a cost of five percent of the award received. All those in favor?
I have.
Who's name?
Thank you, Commissioners.
We have any more unfinished business? No? How about any additional public comment?
Are you gonna wanna give a speech?
Earned it five twenty.
Forgot to ask Mike. What? Did you wanna give a report of anything in the county?
He, he just did. Yeah, he did, I'm right. He, he gave us a report. He, he just did. Yeah, he did, I'm right. He, he gave us a report. All right.